Using your terrific ability to set up a foundation.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to thank you all for your attendance and welcome to the Thursday, June 9th, 2022 Special Meeting Public Works Session of the Public City, Port Smith Public City School Board. I ask that you please stand as we have a brief moment of silence. While we remain standing, I ask that a board member, Tamara Schumate, will lead us in a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Agenda item 2.4 is our mission statement.
The mission of the Port Smith Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 2.5, roll call vote, Lieutenant, it's Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Hines?
Here.
Mrs. Schumate?
Here.
Mr. Tillich?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Cora?
Yes.
Ms. Yanis?
Thank you so much. And Dr. Cotton, he is attending a conference on this evening, so he's not present with us. Agenda item 2.6 is approval of the agenda for June 9th, 2022. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Schumate, seconded by Vice Chair Atkinson, is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumate?
Yes.
Mr. Tillich?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Cora?
Yes.
Ms. Yanis?
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.1 is discussion, annual Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV grant application, and I believe that's Ms. Hales.
Yep. Ms. Hales, 0.00.
Let me get this thing right here.
What are wrong?
That's wrong.
And if you can look in your board docs, you should see the presentation and board docs as well.
All right, so we're going to keep it moving. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Again, my name is Renee Hales, and I have the chance to present to you the 2224 ESA Year Federal Applications for Federal Funding. These applications are Title I Part A, Title I Part D, Title III, Two Part A, which I serve as coordinator, Title III Part A, which is Dr. Prosperant Calhoun, and Title IV Part A, which is myself. Just a reminder that each grant cycle is 24 months. It serves, it runs from July 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2024. All allocations that are listed in the application are preliminary, which means once the final allocations are released sometime in between August and September, we will revise the applications with any revisions that are handed down through the Virginia Department of Education. I'll start with Title I Part A. The preliminary allocation for Title I Part A is a little over $6.4 million. This was a slight increase from the previous year for this particular allocation. As a reminder, Title I Part A serves our most disadvantaged students, improving the academic achievement of the disadvantaged, and is just to provide a fair and equitable education to all students and to close those educational achievement gaps. Currently, and I'll say currently, there are 12 Title I schools. We are having to add another school during the next grant cycle, and we were fortunate enough not to have to do it this year because we were able to use the previous year's direct certification data. But next year, we are looking to add Craddock Middle School as a Title I school. So we'll be working closely with our finance department because there are some changes that we're going to have to make as it relates to positions because a lot of what we handle on Title I are salaries and benefits. So in adding another school, we are going to have to look at some of those positions. So we'll be working closely with funding. Another part of adding another Title I school, there are meetings that we have to have with the community, there are meetings that we have to have with parents, and as well as the school. So we are going to be busy next year as we are preparing to add Craddock Middle. Next slide, please. All right, so what we do with Title I funding, we are able to use purchase instructional supplies and online subscriptions. There is funding set aside for tutoring, SOL remediation, and some stipends for PD, Parent and Family Engagement, which is a requirement under Title I. We are able to provide instructional support in personnel on the school level as well as the division level. We fund one Title I pre-K class and one instructional assistant, and we use that class for those students who don't qualify under the BPI guidelines. And we are only able to fund one class so far. And then there's funds set aside for the homeless and displaced, and we use that part of the salary of the homeless liaison, and we provide funds for the transportation. Next slide. As far as division level personnel, you can see that part of my salary is split funded. My assistant, Kiana, her salary is split funded. We have division level math and reading program specialists, there are six reading coaches, there are two behavior interventionists, there's one parent and family engagement specialist who I have with me this evening, Mrs. Larita Stills, and I also have the associate, Ms. Kiana Taylors, with me as well. And then the homeless liaison part of her salary is split funded. Next slide. On the school level, we have our 12 Title I parent liaisons. There are about 44 kindergarten instructional assistants. That's what we have allotted. Now, not all of those positions are filled because of the vacancies, but there are allotted 44 positions. There are 12 reading interventionists, 12 math specialists, resource teachers, and again, that one pre-K and Title I assistant. Under Title I Part D, this is the neglected and delinquent grant, and we get about $208,000, and that funding supports Harbor Point Behavioral Healthcare Facility, which is an NED facility located here in Portsmouth. That funding that they use, they support consultants for teachers, they use the funds for instructional materials such as Chromebooks, interactive panels, they have an art, music, STEM program. We use the funds to help their classroom libraries, there are site licenses and literacy materials, and they also use funds for CTE support. Next slide. Under Title II Part A, we are preparing, training, and recruiting high-quality teachers and principals. We get about $888,000. This was just a slight increase from the previous year. If you're not aware, that this was one of the grants that was on the chopping block under the Trump administration, but we were able to keep funding for it, and we also got a slight increase. So Title II provides funding for activities that strengthen instructional, strengthen instructional leadership and teacher quality in schools. So we'll use our Title II funding for professional development in the way of instructional personnel, mentoring, and coaching. We use funds for advertising to recruit and proper, recruit properly licensed and endorsed teachers. There's funding set aside for relocation assistance, and this year, we've added some signing bonuses. Not a lot of money, but every little bit helps. And then we have to provide equitable services to our private school, and that is a requirement under Title II. For our personnel that we fund, part of my salary and my associate, we fund the school improvement and professional development coordinator, we have a division level science and social studies program specialist, we have two reading program specialists that work with the middle and high school, and one division level math program specialist that this coming grant cycle will only work with the middle school. Last year, we had a person, but we moved them to the Title I application so that we can provide some additional support for the middle school. Next slide. Under Title III Part A, this is Dr. Prosperant Calhoun's application, and we just get a little over $14,000. I remember when we first started, we were only getting like $3,000 or $4,000. So each year, as our L population has increased, our funding has increased. So these funds awarded under Title III, they support our English language learners in helping them in their academic program, and some of the funds also go towards immigrant children and youth. So we'll use Title III Part A funds for consultants to improve those instructional best practices of our Ls, some professional development for training, workshops, and conferences, as well as some materials and supplies. Under Title IV Part A, our student support and academic enrichment grant, the preliminary allocation is about $471,000, and with this grant, this has improved over about $300,000 over the last three years. So there are three categories under the Title IV application, supporting a well-rounded education, self-safe and healthy students, as well as effective, the effective use of technology. We use our Title III, Title, excuse me, Title IV part funds as a type of there, but we have three behavior interventionists, there's one parent and family engagement specialist, her salary is split funded between Title IV and Title I. We are, we focus on the social emotional learning, there's one school counselor, we use funds for parent and community events, workshops, and activities. We focus on STEM and STEAM instructional materials and supplies, there's funds set aside for technology PD for staff, and there's also funding for the private school set aside, which is a requirement under Title IV as well as Title II. In summary, all of these, the applications are due no later than July 1st, 2022. Again, all allocations are level funded from using last year's amount, and once those preliminary allocations, the final allocations are released in September, the applications will be revised with any suggestions from BDOE. At this time, if you have any questions, I will entertain them.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you. Can we go back to, can we back up to Title I? And it's just, a couple of just, um, I can't remember, homeless and displaced families is one question. Is that McKinney-Vento funds, or is that also with?
With.
With McKinney-Vento?
In addition.
Okay. And do we have any private schools that are taking us up on funding?
Yes.
Okay.
We have four private schools that we have in the area, and all four use Title II and Title IV funding.
Because I know for the longest time, the private schools never, never used it, so we always, okay.
And that was because that we weren't regular with meeting with them.
Okay.
But since about 2015, we meet with them throughout the course of the year.
Okay.
And so we do meetings throughout the school year with all four schools. Now, we've had two to close since, since I started, so now we're down to just four.
Okay. And the, I'm sorry, one, one follow-up, the funding for Title I, you said we're talking about adding another Title I school. Does that come with more funding, or is that funding going to be stretched now in addition to, so some of these split funded positions, some of these funded positions will have to make their way back onto our, back on, coming out of our pocket rather than grant funding?
We'll have to work with finances.
As far as salaries and, okay.
Possibly.
I, I'm just, I'm trying to do the math and see where we need to, okay.
We don't get any more money.
Nope, we're getting more money.
All right, sounds good, thank you so much.
Vice Chair Atkinson, then, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you, Ms. Hales, for the presentation. I know when we were under school level personnel, you had said the positions that we were short, and I understand that the staffing issues that were a lot. How many kindergarten instructional assistants do you know right off top that were short?
I don't have that figure right offhand that I can get it in HR. Ms. Durin can make sure that she has that information. Thank you.
Ms. Thomas?
Actually, Board Member Hines, her second question was my question about the additional school. I noticed that was, it had an asterisk on the slide, but, so they are going to be added? You're pretty sure, okay.
Yeah, the only reason where we didn't have to add them this year, because I did the application and I included them, but we had training through BDOE, and they shared with us that we were able to use 2019, 2020 data because of all of the changes due to COVID. So that's why we didn't have to include them because I emailed Mr. Falk and they panicked.
And we panicked together.
Y'all panicked together.
And that's based on our, our community eligibility percentage at each school. That's what determines whether they're Title I eligible or not. And Craddock Middle, at this point, with their percentage would go above the amount, the percentage that we would have to have to serve them.
It's over 75%.
Right.
I think they were about 75.7%, so there was no way until we found out that we didn't have to carry them this year.
Okay, and then I had a question about the Title IV Part A funding. So how they're used, so this might be, do we have, so we supplement as a, in our school, the other schools that are not covered? Like, if it says one school counselor, then we, that one school counselor at a particular school is covered under Title I, but then the rest are not?
Right.
Okay. And then for like the social emotional learning, what, what is that exactly? Like, I know we included in our curriculum, and we had the here to help, but like, what exactly?
We are trying to promote safe, safe and healthy students, and so we use, whether it be school safety, there are a plethora of activities that we can use for social emotional learning. This year, we're going to use a survey-type panorama. We're going to give the students a survey in the fall for data, and then again in the spring, just to see how well we did. And parents will have the opportunity to opt out of taking the survey. We're just surveying them to see how they're feeling, do they have any concerns, whether it be at home, at school, or whatever. So we're working with the school counselor department under Dr. Carmody to have this panorama survey.
Okay, to establish a baseline?
Yes.
And then do something with that afterwards?
The guidance counselor, well, the school counselors will use the data to derive their school lessons.
Okay, thank you.
Let me teach you social emotional.
Ms. Hales, just a follow-up.
So I was at a forum yesterday, and Coach Baker, he did a presentation, and he's retiring this year, but one of the programs that he uses in his classroom is mindfulness. And I think based on his statistics, like, the kids really like their behavior change, their grades increase less in fractions, will, could that possibly fall under for those particular school's social and emotional well-being, the mindfulness?
It could.
Okay.
And that's, and mathness is already included with PBIS.
It's a part of.
It's a part of it right now as well.
And this panorama will go along to work with our PBIS program that we already have in place.
Okay, because he had mentioned another program that he used to, it's, it's like a curriculum base that he used that could possibly help too, but I was just wondering, could that be a part of that particular funding to purchase that particular program? Very cost-effective, but.
We already purchased it.
Yeah, I think one school, one school is, it's only one school that's actually using it right now. But that's something that we can check into when we start writing for next, for grant cycles.
I think it's Church and Academy. Ms. Thomas?
Well, the Board Member, Vice Chair Atkinson, when she mentioned that program, and then it also got me to thinking, like, I guess my overall thing is I've seen Title I, like, do a lot of programming in the school, I just not, I know I'm not even aware of, like, all that we do that falls under these different areas. Do we have, like, some type of visual, visual that kind of breaks out, like, the programs that maybe we did this past school year, that kind of their success level, their participation?
You mean programs that we?
Yeah, like, I know, like, for example, we just did that book drive, I think, June 1st, where it was Title I to prep students for the summer, summer reading, right? That fell under, I'm guessing, one of these, one of these.
Parent and family.
Thank you, yes, yes, okay. So when Vice Chair Atkinson mentioned that mindfulness program, even like there, we've been talking about, like, you know, school gardens and kind of how that falls into as well, like, social emotional learning, like, how do we see what the plan is for the next school year, where they fall under these different fundings, and then what type of additional program we can have or maybe fund it out of the Title I funds?
Well, while I write the grant, it's a collaborative effort with every department within the division. So we get input from science, music, art, PE, the, the core content areas, youth, risk, student services, and we look at the needs of, of the division. And so when we sit down to start our planning, we look at what is our greatest need. And under Title IV, there's not a lot of extra money once we pay for salaries and benefits. So last year, we were able to buy some music equipment. This year, we're focusing on STEM and STEAM.
Okay.
So it all depends on what, what our funds will allow and what we're going to get the best bang for our buck.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the education.
Now, I was going to say that, Ms. Thomas, and each school, Title I school, each principal has their own Title I budget. So a lot of the programs that the schools do that include parent engagement is funded through Title I as well, and they work with Ms. Hales and her department. Most time, their department is actually there. And I was going to say, they know they're, they're a department of three, but, but they show up.
They do a lot, yes.
Everybody's event.
They do a lot, yes.
That's why I make sure every year, I give them kudos because I see the departments and other school divisions, and they're huge. So for them to be three individuals working with every single Title I school, they're doing an amazing job with the, I thought with.
Question. For the Title I, the two behavior interventionists, is that, do you think that's adequate in terms of them being split?
We have two that work with the Title I schools, and then we have three behavior interventionists on Title IV. So there's a total of five.
Five, okay. All right, thank you.
And I was going to also give a kudos to Ms. Hales. They partnered with Mount Herman Pre-K for a STEM day, and that was an amazing event to see happen at a preschool, and it was not only Title I, but it was science department, a couple other community partners. They all came together to have STEM stations outside the school, and the kids went to different stations and worked different activities, and that was a great programming event to see. And I would like for us in the future, if we could, maybe at our board retreat, to really have a robust discussion about pre-K too. Mainly because I think in order for us to stop the bleeding and start filling some of these learning gaps, I think we'd have to focus on foundational learning that starts with pre-K, and, and maybe seeing what we can do as a school board as far as funding was needed, you know, to really build that program up. I know a lot of our focus has to be on tested grade levels, and that's every school division. But I'm really wondering with what we're going through as a city and school division, how we can focus, you know, more on pre-K too, and what it's going to take from the school board side to make those things happen. Because again, they're in charge of preschool program too, and it's, you know, three individuals, you know, so whatever we can do to really try to build that program up. And it's really important, I look at Head Start, where I am, you know, my kids are speaking Spanish by the time they get to kindergarten, and I think, I think all students should have that, you know, not just specialized programs. So anything we could do to try to really build up our program within our means, I think we really should have a discussion and look at it and see how, because it's, I don't want to say it's too late, but it's difficult to catch a child when he's already in sixth or seventh grade and read it on a third grade level.
Mm-hmm.
Try to do that, so if we could, that'd be great.
Hey, I just, I don't know if you all realize it, but writing this grant is a major undertaking.
Absolutely.
And it consumes months of intensive collaboration and studying and, you know, making decisions, and so I really want to give Ms. Hales a great commendation because
Absolutely.
When we came to Portsmouth in 2015, she has really taken this grant to all kinds of levels, and she has helped us to build our technology program through this grant. This is one of the reasons that we have computers for every student, that we have iPads. She is very conscientious about building things within our schools, and she and her team do an excellent job, so.
Absolutely. I really believe that they're a perfect example of servant leadership in the school division, because as I said, they show up, they volunteer, they help, they participate. They don't just sit behind a desk and plan and coordinate. They actually, they're there and they're present, and I really appreciate that. Parents appreciate it as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and so we'll be, I want to go on that, that next meeting.
The next meeting.
Okay. All right. Agenda item 3.2 is our agenda review for June 23rd, 2023. That's, of course, if you have any agenda items, whether they be open session or closed session items that need to be presented, please let us know so we can make sure we cover those things for you at our next meeting, and just send Dr. Bracy and myself an email in reference to that. Agenda item 3.3 is consideration to approve certain VSB policies. We already called, we carried that over from the last meeting to this one, to give everyone a chance to review and come up with any questions. So I will first entertain a motion for to approve those policies, and then we can have discussion after we have a second. Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Schumate. We'll look at the second, Ms. Williams, okay. End discussion, questions? All right. Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumate?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Tillich?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Tillich?
Yes.
Ms. Yanis?
Thank you. And Mr. Falk, I just wanted to make sure if we're going to be voting on the Title I grant application at the next meeting?
Next meeting.
So that, that won't be too short of a?
No, sir. No, we'll have plenty of time to get them in by July 1st.
It's electronic submission, right?
Right.
Yeah. You have to, it's like, submit, okay? Yeah.
Agenda item 3.4 is consideration of contract for additional day treatment providers. Copy of the, I believe the contract is in your board docs, and also the announcement for that, and I believe also the score sheets are in there as well. And if everyone has that, I will entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hines, second by Ms. Atkinson. Do you have any questions or discussion for the contract?
I have one.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you. Are these the only two people that we're going to have in the buildings doing day treatment, or we have additional?
We have additional. This is, last year, we came to you with a group of seven, I believe, and this is two additional. The, the industry is going through a lot of change because the regulations are changing. So we're seeing companies drop off of our original seven. I think we've lost two of those seven, and so we're coming back with additional to try to make sure that we have enough to support our students. You'll probably see us go out for day treatment every year.
That's what I'm saying.
Because so many companies are going out of the industry either because of regulation change, or they couldn't find workers, so on and so forth. So as soon as we, we will probably put something out in the fall for another set of day treatment providers to make sure we have enough.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Is this a standard contract term length?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, this is a.
2029, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
It just seems a little long, but okay.
It'll be here before you know it.
Okay.
That was my question, why is it, why is it so long?
Because I think they, they're approved by the state, they have times of approval by the state, and then also, when they come in, you want to make sure you have some continuity. And then also when they come in, you wanna make sure you have some continuity with the students that they're working with. So over that timeframe, they work and build relationships with the students as well as they move up the, the rank. So this one is maybe about a year more than our normal five-year capacity that we do because you wanna make sure that those relationships still are, are in. And then also as you're transitioning, to make sure that you can transition if companies go out of business, so on and so forth.
Oh. What happens up there?
That was my question.
If they're not performing according to?
If they don't perform, what happens? Normally, they work with our, our Office of Youth Risk. And if there's a company that's not performing, we would obviously go through the regular procurement, care notice process. If they did not, um, cure based on what we're sent, um, sent to them as a requirement, then we could terminate the contract. And that's why we make sure we have more than one company because you don't wanna get stuck with a company that may not be providing the service and then have nowhere else to go.
So we have five right now?
Nah, nah, I, I know with, just to make sure I have a clear understanding.
Yes, sir.
I know with, with all of our, I asked this about six years ago, with all of our contracts we have, we, we reserve the right to end the contract, we have an issue with performance.
Yep.
So I know with all of our day treatment providers, Dr. Sandler has a comprehensive review. Well, she has them report to her throughout the year, but she has a review at the end of the year. And if, uh, the committee is not satisfied with their performance, we do have the right to, uh, waive in, in the contract, even if it's still within the contract terms.
Okay.
And I think normally we used to do five years, it was like three years and two, one year renewals.
Right.
What we used to do, but some of them didn't make it to three years either, so.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry about your accent.
And just to, just to piggyback on what you said, the, the last day treatment contracts that we did was, was the five-year contract. So I'm, I'm just wondering why this wording isn't the same as the other day treatment contracts? I mean, twenty twenty-nine, I get that they're not performing, um, we can't let them go, but that's, that's a long time.
Yeah, I mean, uh, they, they had, they have not been presented with contracts as of yet, correct?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir. So until you
What we could do is if, if the board, so chooses, uh, if you all wanted to approve the contract with a different term limit, you could do that as well and they could make adjustments to the, to the contract. If that's what we are choosing, if I'm just making a suggestion. Or if you wanted to take this back and then bring it back, you can do that as well. I'm just giving you different options that we can actually do.
Um, I will say this, um, I know a lot of these companies are having issues staying, um, in business because of the Medicaid issue with the state. So the state is not allowing for companies to, um, keep their Medicaid process. So it's almost like some of the, some of the insurance companies are like monopolizing at this point. So that's why you see a lot of day treatment companies closing because they can't get their licensures back. So I, I don't, that has nothing to do with this, but um, just to say, you know, we do need multiple folks just in case people can't get their licensure again, so. I know that's a huge issue right now.
Ms. Williams?
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, I, I, you know, I agree with all the circumstances of why, but I think we should go with the standard contract that, uh, we normally do. No more than the five years, did you say it was three and two or whatever?
Yeah, three years, two years.
Yeah, cause I mean, to twenty twenty-nine, that's a mighty long time. And I mean, you say you, you, you know, keep the continuity with the students, but the students are gone.
Right, right.
Well, and speaking of continuity of students, do we have anything within our language, within our policy and how we deal with them? Because at one point, we talked about when we have students that jump from school to school because they move. You know, that you might be in four schools or five schools in your, in one school year because of movement of parents. And if we had a student that was in day treatment at one school and they go to another school, they've gotta start the whole process all over again. Do we have anything within our, within our policy or within our practice that allows that student record from? Right, because, and because it was, it's different providers at different schools. And so it, you know, if I'm at one school and my parents, you know, my mom or my dad move, then I gotta start all over with somebody else. And by the time I'm into a rhythm and a rhyme with that one, then I'm up and moving again. So we talk about continuity of students, but to me, the only continuity you're gonna get is if you could possibly get the same company across all. But I know that that is, you know, pretty much, you know, whoosh, you know?
Yeah, that, that's actually out of our hands as a school division. And it becomes between the parent and the company as far as release of records, uh, continuity of services going from another school. And basically what they have to do, so with licensing, uh, they're approved for a license at a particular school.
Right.
So if, if they're gonna be at Norcom, licensing would give them a license for day treatment at Norcom. So they, they, so they go to Wilson, they can't treat them at Wilson, they don't have a license for there.
Right.
So it is really
And that record doesn't follow that child to Wilson to whoever the provider is at Wilson?
Unless the parent, which they normally do, they, they, they'll sign a release for their record to go with the new company normally, but it's still up to the parent to
Okay.
do like, we, we can't put a policy in place for it.
And some of the companies have multiple sites.
Right.
So if they're set up at the school that they're transferring to, then they, they can.
Okay. Okay.
And I, I did notice that with this contract, unlike some of our other ones, these companies are rather large companies.
Right.
Uh, like multi-state companies, so, um, I know National Counseling Group is, I know they're nationwide. I'm not, I know the other one, I know they have some, uh, locations I know of in Lynchburg as well cause they presented at the V S B one year, but, uh, so they're fairly large companies.
Okay.
I, I think we discussed it one year. Do we get any, um, benchmarks or outcomes of, you know, how effective they really are? We never get any reports or anything?
We can.
I, I'm not, I'll let Dr. Bracy answer, but I, I don't think, I'm not sure what we can get legally.
Question.
Information in closed session, it doesn't have to talk about the type of treatment, but you could certainly test, say, you know, what, what the progress was made with a student that was referred there or whatever.
I, I, I don't, I don't think you can for, cause I, I mean, I'm not gonna answer, but I think it's, it's a legal issue because it's really between the parent
And the company.
and the company. So the school division is kinda out of the picture with it. Now, I think we could probably have the principals come in and say how they feel like day treatment is performing and they're building. But as far as, uh,
Well, I mean
the services that the actual particular child gets, I'm not sure. But I, I'll let
Can I jump in?
I don't know, I would have, I would have an issue with any company coming into a school building. We don't, we don't
We should have some type of
how they're performing, what they're doing, or
Is that
they're just getting paid for nothing.
Right.
Well, but, we don't No, no, we, we're not paying them.
We don't pay them. No, I know.
Oh, okay.
But your tax money's paying them.
No, well, so Medicaid, they do get No, uh, Medicaid, they do get reports from those companies. I, I, I'm saying that as a school division, I don't think we get them, but
Well, I think we need to research that a little further. There should be some kind of, uh, report we can get from Medicaid or somebody.
Well, Ms. Williams, sorry, just to advise you guys, um, HIPAA laws and privacy laws, they're gonna prevent anybody from getting access to any kind of student-specific information. Because these are medical providers, right? So they're covered by the same kinds of protections that a doctor or a dentist or a therapist would be covered by. So unless the parent consents and the parent is the only one that holds that consent, unless they consent, we can't get any information about individual student medical care.
Well, so we could have students that are sexually harassed or anything and we would not ever know.
Medical issues, so, I mean, there, there is a distinction between medical issues and criminal issues, right? So
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Okay.
Can we get any kind of information on things that are not medical? I'm talking about
I'm talking about metrics. I would think that maybe a copy of Dr. Sanderland's comprehensive report that she does would be what, what I think legally we could look at as far as how she's measuring them and what that outcome is there.
There has to be some metric that we
So, so we could also look at student behavioral discipline, which we have access. Number of incidents prior to treatment, number of incidents
And that's the data that she
But that's what she gets, is kind of, that's, that's overall, that's not like individual. And then you, you were saying that for student
Well, no, no, I, I am saying from the benchmarks of when we use these companies and then the outcome measurement of like Dr. Kramati was saying about the behavior.
Right, so overall.
Overall.
We can do overall.
I don't need any
You, 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 you would mention, let's say if a student started, you know, how did this student do? That, that, I thought you were mentioning like one individual student, but I thought
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean that.
Right, okay.
I just wanna report.
Oh, I, I got you. We, we can do that, yeah, we can do that, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm
Well, Dr. Kramati pretty much elaborated what I was trying to say as well. You know, basing off like behavior or even academic somehow, um, so that we can kind of just follow the, not the student, but follow the process. So we know, so especially as we're moving into this phase of, um, you know, mental health and social behavior learning, finding ways that we can find better practices moving forward. And I think finding these type of metrics will allow us to do that, so they pretty much summed it up.
Right. Any other questions in reference?
Let me add, Ms. Atkinson, I think the last contract was also twenty twenty-nine for that, or for that same term, same number of years, the one that we approved, um, I think it was last year. So I just wanted to make that distinction based on the, on the information here. We can go back and check.
I could've sworn I said three and two.
But if, if you look at the, the term of contract here, it basically says the contract term will be in line with the previously awarded contract which expires on six thirty, twenty twenty-nine. Again, y- you know, just making that distinction, not saying that we have to do it one way or the other, but
And in all, and, and all, that's only six school years away. I mean, we're split, yeah, I hate to, I, I don't wanna say we're splitting hairs,
Right.
but you figure your next school year is twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. So by the time this completes in, in six of twenty-nine, that's only six school years away.
I mean, as long, I think it's a long time, I'm not used to that. Um, but again, as long as we have that caveat where we can pull out of the contract at any time if
That's always
Yeah, but I guess my thing is we can pull out of the contract if services are not being provided, but then, oh, I'm sorry, you said no?
No, we, we can pull out there and not meet our standards.
So that's my thing, so we have a standard and, okay, so we have a standard and expectation, but no metrics that we're tracking to see how they're performing.
Dr. Sandler, comprehensive review.
She does a comprehensive review based on the expectation of meeting a, a certain amount of like what, yeah, like I guess I'm just trying to understand like what is our protection? That's my only thing about the, the length of time of the contract.
She has our metrics in terms of how we measure the, the programs. She has that, Dr. Sanderland does.
Okay, so there's a measurement.
Can we get that next?
So are you asking for that at retreat?
Sure.
Yeah. I mean, are you at the next meeting?
Yes.
If she has it, we'll go to them. Inquiring minds would like to know if she has it.
Yeah.
Well, and, and I'm sorry, um, Vice Chair, go ahead.
You go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, there's been a few of us that have been around long enough where we had seventeen providers in here and no metrics and, you know, they, I don't wanna say they were running amok in the place, but we had no idea who they were, what they were doing, what the metrics were. So I think, you know, now that it's settled and we've gone through the regulation changes with the federal government, that if we have an expectation and if we have a standard that we're holding, that I think we should be abreast of what that expectation and standard is, um, as we go through, uh, this process.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's like deja vu, cause we, uh,
We've been here, we've had this conversation.
Came in, I remember Ms. Williams was saying, well, there is one particular high school right here and they doing, blah, 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 and they ain't doing nothing to the kids.
Sounds like Ms. Williams.
So that's why Dr. Sandler, she start, she started coming, uh, I think every year after that
Right.
to talk about, uh, day treatment performance, uh, because that's, I know she has it, so
Okay.
we'll have her come, uh, next meeting and
Like quarter.
Early meeting. Cause we usually finish five, ten minutes and we sit here and wait.
Early session.
Okay.
So may I also add that with the extension of the contract to twenty twenty-nine, it sort of is a protection for us? I get what you're saying about it being six years, but we can get, we can pull out of the contract at any time. We lock them into six years because there's such a shortage of providers that it gives us a safety net of knowing that we have that contract with them for six years. Now, if they don't meet our needs, we can let them go, but at least we know we have a six-year contract with this company.
That's a good point. That's a good point.
And we, we've had problems, I know what, a couple of years ago, um, in another area, Dr. Kramati is familiar with, that we lost employees from that company because it was time for the renewal process. And they, the employees saw that, well, I don't know if you're gonna get renewed, so I'm out.
So in reference to the motion that we have on the floor, oh, I'm sorry.
So just, uh, one, one other question, Mr. Thomas, and I'm not sure, can, can we say legally the names of the companies right now?
The companies that are here?
Right, is it?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So this is for additional services, so one of the companies are already in the schools already, right?
One of these companies?
Yes.
I'm not sure, I think these are all new.
I thought we approved
I think, no, these are all new, they're not on the current list of companies that we have. These additionals are two new.
How many companies are we considering for how many positions?
Two companies tonight, uh, two new companies that will be coming in.
Did we do this last year?
It was
Year before last.
It was year before last, I spoke earlier. Uh, I think she, so, I think we had a company that we, uh, approved before, but I think their name was, was Visions and not InVision.
Right, right.
It's a different company, yeah. So, so, and so in reference to the motion, are we gonna, are we, are we voting to keep the motion with the contract as it is? Or are we gonna make another, withdraw and make another motion on another timeframe? Just to make sure we're clear.
I'm good, I'm good.
That's a
I'm gonna keep it.
Alright, so, so there's a motion on the floor that has a second? And if there's no other, uh, discussion, we do a roll call vote, Madam Clerk. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry.
But that's still, um, Dr. Sandler will still bring the
Ms. Atkinson? Yes. Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Schumay?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Deluge?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
No.
Mrs. Williams?
Uh, yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
Seven yes votes, one no, it passes.
Thank you so much. Uh, agenda item three point five, subcommittee reports. Do we have any reports, uh, for this evening? I know we did have a, we have liaison meeting today?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Ms. Schumay?
Alright. So yes, we had a city council liaison meeting today. Unfortunately, um, the liaisons did not attend, but the interim city manager was there and a couple of other individuals. If you wanna correct me as to what their titles are, Dr. Bracy, cause I'm not completely sure, but yeah, it was two other, I, I think the interim
James Wright was there, the city engineer.
And the young lady was?
Patty Phillips. Patty Phillips is, who is, um, helping out in the finance department.
Gotcha, I didn't wanna give her incorrect title.
And I just wanted to announce that my husband, who is at the hospital.
Oh. Yeah, I was getting ready to say that, he did, Dr. Whitaker reached out, he had a family emergency.
Oh, no. Sorry to hear that. I'm so sorry to hear that. Well, I don't know what happened with the other one, but my prayers go out to Dr. Whitaker. We spoke about the C I P projects, just an update, um, cause you know, sometimes that can get a little iffy. And now we may have a new city manager, so, um, just like our last meeting, uh, when we talked about the school, um, there was a question about, well, we didn't talk about that previously. It wasn't with the liaisons, but it was with the administration and it was a little confusing. So, um, today, we spoke about the C I P funds and what that looks like. If you want to, um, go into any detail, Mr. Falk, about what they're planning to, um, appropriate or what they've already appropriated for funding for the twenty twenty-three fiscal year.
Yeah, we had a discussion with them about their appropriations for, uh, C I P projects and so the city appropriates
Yeah, we had a discussion with them about their appropriations for CIP projects and, so the city appropriates, they do a five-year planning calendar, but the first year is the only year that is appropriated or funded, if I'm, if I say that correctly.
Yes.
So in this case, FY 2023 has been appropriated and we were told funded. The out years from FY 24 to 27 are not funded, they are planning years.
Okay.
So anything in those years are kind of, as we go along and they have funding for. So right now, they funded about, and I, right now in their preliminary budget, they have some finals that they're gonna put out sometime this week. Their preliminary budget was about $4.8 million of projects mainly related to our athletic fields and those projects for the first years, the A and E and some of the planning and programming. And then they had about a million for arcade facility for programming, as well as a pot of money, about 1.6 million for various schools improvement. This is as of their preliminary plan, when their final comes out, these numbers may change. But that's what we talked about today, but again, the subsequent years after FY 23 are not funded. So we would have to get assurances on funding for those, for those schools and those other projects that fall into those years.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thomas, did they say anything about funding for the new school? Because I know we've been...
And that's... It's all right, don't worry, it's cool. I'll take that, I'll take that.
I was like, wait a minute now.
Look, he dead in the face.
I just let it go.
Don't worry, Mr. Falk.
That's all right, you do it.
We, we not like city council.
Yeah, I know, you do it.
What are you looking at? Is there Mr. Thomas behind him? She keeps saying that, okay?
Mr. Thomas is a good man, I take that.
I was just trying to figure out, I'm sorry, I just used to talking to him at the beach.
Oh, you're good, you're good. But, and that's what I mean about the out years, there is no funding that is established for the out years of this plan for our school facilities. So right now, there's no dollars that are connected to the K, the K-8 school or any of our other school facilities that we've asked for money for. We have money for programming and possibly some of the A and E costs on and so forth, but no money associated for the actual construction and, you know, the A and E of that particular building. Dr. Brace, please correct me if I say something that wasn't there today.
That's what I heard.
You're good.
Yeah. Yeah, and so from our understanding, we, we are funded for the design piece of the schools, of the new schools.
Right.
But not necessarily the building of the new schools. And I did ask the question because I know that was also kind of up in the air whether or not we still had that property, which was the old Willett Hall, because I know at one point someone said, well, no, it's gonna go to something else and no, it's gonna go to something else. So from my understanding, in that vicinity, yes, we're gonna have a school, but it's also, from my understanding, they're gonna have like public safety over there. So both can fit over there from what I was told, but I don't know whether or not we're gonna have the Willett Hall side or the other side, we don't know that for sure. So I know for those of us who was here in 2018, the, the blueprint that was shown to us, that was just, yeah. From my understanding, that was just something to give us, that wasn't the actual school that we could, hey, so, all right. But I just wanted to make sure we did have a location for the school, which we do. We do not have funding for the school as of yet, but we do have funding for the design of the school.
K-8 action.
From my understanding.
Yeah, there's, there's money in there for the design, but we don't know if that's gonna be enough.
Correct.
But it will, it will get us started.
Dr. Whitaker and then Ms. Tilleson.
But the money for the design, is this just for the middle school or is this for the CTE school as well?
That was only for the, the K-8 school.
Okay.
I didn't see anything attached to the CTE.
The CTE school money shows up in FY 26 and 27, obviously not funded, but as the, the subsequent years planned right now.
Right.
Okay.
One of my questions was about the CTE building as well. With the 4.8 million that you mentioned, you said that was for, for athletic fields?
Athletic fields is some, primarily, and then also for the K-8 facility and then some various school improvements. There's nothing else in there other than those things.
You mentioned that the, the cost for the designs were included. Now, is the field, is that for the design and the build out, or is that just for the design?
That's just design. And that may not be enough for the design.
Yeah, no build out.
Right, so there's no build out. The build out money is sitting in FY 2024 with no funding, so...
Because that's for the turf field.
Right.
Great.
And the, if I remember correctly, the turf field and the upgraded facilities to go along with it so that that field could be rented out. And when you start talking about a turf field, you're talking about three or four layers of under, you're talking about water, water engineering, ground engineering, bond back credits.
Everything.
Yes, and, and honestly, right now, I don't think you can build anything with any amount of money because everything is so inflated right this minute, it's, it's a chore and a half.
Well, you mean, what do you mean, you can't do it, you mean?
Well, I'm just saying, even if we had the funds, it's not gonna be enough funds because the rate of inflation for the labor and for the, the product right now is just, you're, not us, but whoever is holding the contract, it's, there's always gonna be, oh, we need to go back and, you know, what is it, what is it called when you build, an addendum or a change order? You know, there's change orders that come through because now the, what we, what we quoted you in May of 2020, you know, May of '22 for this, now in September, when I'm going to buy the rock for the said, you know, bed underneath is now $50,000 more and I need a change order for more money. So that's, even if we, you know, and not that I'm poo-pooing on the idea, I don't want anybody to think that I'm doing that, but even if there was the money there, it would still, you would still have to go back to the, to the pot for more money right this minute.
Right, and I think that's what they're doing in Suffolk, you know, because they're, they're building, they're gonna build three for their three high schools. They've already started on one, so once they finish with that one, then they're gonna move to the next.
Yep.
So they're, they already have it going.
Right.
This is the field, so I think we're, it's two different things, we're talking about the field and the design of the schools. I think, so, just to be clear, we, we're talking about two separate things, the design of the school, not the building of the new school, but the design.
Yep, that's included in the 4.8, or no?
The 1 million is the design for the school.
For the new school, okay.
Yes, the 1 mil, that's 4.8 is total, is total. And so within that 4.8, we're gonna start with the, the high schools with the turf and all of that. We're starting at, I see Norcom first and see where we get.
Okay.
Hopefully, and then we're gonna go down to the rest of the schools as time progresses.
And I think what's...
But I, I just wanna just clarify that the, not saying we don't need turf fields, I understand that that wasn't a priority that the board...
I was gonna ask that.
I just want to make that clear, our priority was, was the facilities, so...
I was gonna ask that.
I just want to make that clear, that's all.
Yeah, this is there.
I was a little confused.
But why is it, why is...
Very what?
Go ahead.
Ms. Williams, then Ms. Tilleson, and then Ms...
Well, I mean, that was my statement as well, I mean, turf fields, athletic fields were not a priority of the school division. And for city council to kind of tell us where this money's gonna go, I don't think is really a fair judgment for the school board. And then on top of that, the maintenance to continue with the turf fields and the other amenities is gonna be a cost. And so I think we should go to city council and ask for, if this is what they want, they should include in years to come, maintenance to keep these fields, because Churchland High School, for example, that field, the football field and track, I mean, that has to get redone almost every other year, every two, every three years because of the sinking land that it's on. So we're gonna put all this money into a football field at Churchland High School that's gonna eventually start sinking or fall apart due to the ground that it's on. So I think that city council should be held responsible or at least provide some funding to continue the maintenance for the next five, 10, 15 years moving forward.
And I, and I think that's something that, that, that we can share with them. And when we were talking about the athletic complexes, one of the things that we said that we do need that was more of an immediate need was the field houses, because that's something that we definitely need. Because we don't have any place for any of the athletic teams to use during football games, soccer or any of that. They have to walk 10 minutes to the school and by that time, the halftime, that period is over. So we, the conversation started there. So when they heard that, then the question came up, well, we need a, we need a turf field for the, for the city, for the schools as well, because other school divisions have it. So that's how that all started. Now, our request, the field houses were high on the list because we don't have them. And then that came along with it, and the question was, is that something that you all would like? Could, would you benefit from it? Sure, sure we can, we'd love to have it. So that's how it was introduced. I know we, we said the, the new K-8 school, the new CTE school and the replacement of Churchland Middle.
Those are our priorities.
That, that, those were the priorities, and then we, we talked about the three field houses as well. And then from the, from the field houses, as I mentioned, that's when they started talking about those upgrades as well. And, and the way it's always been, we put out our priorities and then the city will determine which ones they will fund. That's always been the practice.
Yeah, it's always been the practice, but they don't jumpstart us and put in their priority ahead of us. It's not my concern, and if the total is 4.8 million and we have been talking about rehabbing or whatever with the CTE program for our students on school, that, that seems like that should take priority over a turf field or football or whatever, because at least the kids would have an opportunity when they graduate to get a job. If, if we could have a place on our campus that they could get training, instead of having to go through TCC and, and take those tests or whatever they have to do. And we would have, and that's been the cry from the community since I've been on this scoreboard.
And, and to address Ms. Williams's point, Ms. Schumay and Ms. Thomas, that they've been hard at work, doing some, some touring around different school divisions as well, getting some ideas. And during the retreat, we're actually gonna have a really in-depth conversation about CTE and how we move forward with city council together as a board, because that is one of our major concerns and needs in the school division. But they, they, they have been working and they're gonna present some information at the retreat for us all so we can start having a more robust conversation about it and really put some things into action.
My other question is, this CIP budget that they presented, this is what they've already approved to...
I believe so.
For the next task for the fields.
This is already approved.
So I mean, who approved, how did they approve something for fields and all that costing all this money when we could use that money for rehabbing one of our facilities for our students?
Well, I will say this, gauging the, the districts and, and their building funds, this, this don't even...
I knew it, they wouldn't even touch it.
It's not, from one of the, the buildings we went to go look at, I think they said it was 10 million, that was the start.
30 to 50 million for those.
Yeah, that was the start, so I don't, not to negate the fact that, yes, we do have our own priorities and something could take precedence over this, but even in the past, we don't necessarily have a say-so with CIP funds. Most of the time, within the city in general, you don't have, you could present it to them, but what they do is, they, they have their own, you know...
Yeah, well, it, it all depends on the council and the type of council that they have, where they decide whether they're gonna take our input or they're gonna do what they want to do. That's, that's what usually, usually occurs, but all I'm saying is, even if the building that you saw was 10 million, if the total of whatever they have there is 4.8 million, that's...
That's almost half of it.
That goes a long way towards 10.
That was 10 million to start.
Yeah, but you see, I, I've been told by other people that...
It, it would depend, I mean, I don't, we shouldn't get into the estimates and costs, but you know, it would depends on, you know, what you zone for, if it's gonna be a prefab building or not, if it's gonna be brick, if it's gonna be, you know...
A location?
Right.
Because we don't technically have a location as of yet, we have one for the K through eight, but we don't have one for CTE yet, not yet.
And, and again, I don't want to get into speculation during the meeting, if we can try to, put all our thoughts together for, for the retreat as far as CTE goes, we do that. But as far as the, the CIP...
That was my question.
It has been approved, but it's, I mean, if we come up with something else and, and ask them to reappropriate, I mean, that's just a conversation, they could, they could do that.
And, and again, the liaisons, they, they take what we ask them. So, so, so if this what we want to ask them to take, then that's what we...
I would like to see us at retreat actually sit down as a board and go through what our priorities should be as a board because we do have several buildings that are, you know, at their age limit. I mean, when we did our building inventory, you know, when Dr. Bracy got here, I mean, I can go back and we can talk about a Churchland Elementary that's pushing 68 years at this point. We're talking about Churchland Middle, talking about West Haven, we're, you know, we've got several schools that are on that list that we need to be advocates for, for many new buildings within this division. And while field houses is, you know, we have a lot of priorities, but I think we need to sit and discuss really where we want to put our focus over the next three to five years to make sure that we get funding nailed down for these priorities before our buildings start becoming hazardous to be in because they are falling apart, because they, you know... When I worked in Smithfield, we always said you can only put so much lipstick on a pig and it's still a pig, you know? But once you get to the end of that lifespan for a building, it doesn't matter how much HVAC rehab you do, it doesn't matter how many windows, how many lights you replace, when the foundation is poor and your walls are cracking, that's, that's where you're at. And so I think we really need to take a good look at what we want as a board for our priorities for the next three to five and, and think long-term and rather not year to year, as we're presented sometimes from council. I would like to see us have that discussion as well.
I got it. Ms. Thomas, I'll leave you next.
I was gonna go to the next board report, but I wanted to, when you said... But when, when board member Hines just said that, I, I had to offer my two sit, wrap this up as well to... First, thank you to our two city council liaisons and our school board. I know y'all bring the priorities there and, you know, I, I think the relationship has been great between school board and city council so far, as far as funding, our, funding our budget and so forth. So I think that is due to some really good working liaisons on our board as well, so I know it's not easy. But I do, part of me, I have to agree with what, what's been echoed here is that, what are we telling our students? What are we telling our kids? Like, when, what Ms. Hines just said, we have aging buildings, we have overcrowded schools, we need a new middle school, we need CTE, CTE in school. I do think that hopefully city council will reconsider, maybe not this cycle, but the next cycle. One, to increase their CIP budget, I was gonna ask, do they even have the right to allocate more funds towards CIP? They do?
Well, yeah, they do, they do.
If they have it.
If they have it, they can, right?
Which?
They don't?
They don't.
Okay, all right. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, and, and one thing that, when I spoke briefly to Dr. Bracy about that can always be a consideration that we can ask them is if, if we do have additional funds at the end of the year, if they can be reallocated to CIP to cover some of our needs. And of course, that would be a board, board decision on where we need our funds to go if we have funds left over, but that's always an option as well. So I want us to keep that in mind as well.
Okay.
It just takes, takes a vote from them to, to allow that to happen.
Okay.
That did come up today, we talked about that.
Okay, okay.
Oh, great, okay.
All right.
So we have a line item for that.
Okay, great.
So just in case we, you know, agree upon it, they do have a line item for us to utilize if we have any end of the year additional funds that it can go into that C, CIP portion.
Okay.
Well, that's why I said I really want us to have a robust discussion during the retreat because that's something we need to look at, because what we're talking about for buildings are our one-time expenses, which you can use in the year... because what we're talking about for buildings are our one-time, uh, expenses, which you can use in the year funds for one-time expenses. We really need to just put our, our thinking caps on, and really have a really robust discussion about what we want to do, and how we wanna proceed with it. You know, I think, I think the opportunity to really act is now, while we can, so. And I do have, Ms. Hines, your, uh, priority discussion as well, anything else you all, again, want to talk about at the retreat, please send it, as soon as y'all can, so we can get, uh, schedules, they can do whatever research needs to be done for it.
And also, at the end of the year, if they do agree to that, and I know they have a line item or whatever, but it has to, you know, it has to go back to council, they have to reappropriate it.
Right.
Because remember, we went through that big.
Yeah. We, we, we didn't mention that specifically, but we did mention.
Yeah. People are more.
I understand.
Understanding, and they will say, oh, you all keep it, and that's what happened with us, and then later on, down the road, we were.
Oh, no, it will go back to them, and they were re-appropriated, yeah.
It'll go back to them, but the thing of it is, there's no guarantee, what this council may say.
Right.
All of your end of year funds, we can, we'll place them here, and then as you build up, your kitty, it may go towards a project, but the next council will may say, no. So, when we look at end of year funds, I look at it as, what can we get done right away? Right, and don't, don't wait on the next council or administration to see what happens. I would say, if we can get it done, get it done, just look at whatever that amount of money is, and just make that request to them.
And I think that's the hesitancy with the schools, because what you don't wanna do is start building something, and then the next council comes in, like,
Right.
No, we don't have no money for that, and now we have like a three-quarter of a school, or a quarter of a school, looking crazy, and we can't finish something. So, I think that was the, the issue that we talked about earlier, that a lot of the things that we wanna do, we have to do it within that year, and that's difficult. So, um, trust me, I understand all the concerns, we brought it to them, but we also have some, um, hesitancies because of the expectations of spending now those funds, and whether or not we'll be able to have some additional funds the following year. And the way it looks, there's gonna be a, a gap between us getting certain funding, when it comes to CIP funds, so, um, just something to speak about, like, uh, Dr. Patillo stated, see what we can do within a short period of time.
Well, just a, a follow-up on what Ms. Schumay said, um, sorry, saying that we want to not do the field houses and the, and the, the fields, and give the money back, and then hold on, and hope that city council appropriate more money to build the school.
No, I don't wanna give the money back.
Nobody said that.
How was I having that discussion?
Yeah, nobody said that.
How was I having that discussion with them?
My feeling is that if you have the money to do something now, you know, go ahead and do it, because it's not gonna be guaranteed.
Right, nah, I, I think it was more of a question of priority.
Right, I mean, I, I want the CTE. I mean, that's my dream, is to have, you know, a school where we can offer all of these programs, but we have to have the money to do it.
That's right.
And, and during the, the retreat, uh, uh, so with Dr. Bracy and staff, so they're gonna start looking at possibilities for, you know, rehab, possibilities at different locations and things of that sort as well, so, we, we should have a very good discussion about it, uh, at the retreat.
If we have ideas, um, for the CTE, should we send it to the liaisons, or send it to Dr.?
Yeah, make, make sure I was included, Dr. Bracy on it as well.
But yes, absolutely, send it.
All right.
Absolutely. All right, uh, I'm, I'm just gonna email y'all my report from, uh, from our operations, but, but Dr. Bracy was saying, a lot of the end of the year funds that we do have, we use to complete, uh, projects for, on our schools now, such as lighting, HVAC.
Signs.
Painting. What would you say about signs?
Signs.
All, all, all of those things that they're doing, so you, you have about, uh, I said, quite a few schools being painted, uh, work at all 16 schools during the summer, all floors, things of that sort, so everything's being done with those projects that we can do with excess funds, so, um, we are trying to do upgrades as much as we can at all the buildings. All right, was any other reports at all?
Uh, we met with, um, I'm sorry. We had a quick, brief curriculum and instruction meeting today, committee meeting today, and, um, Dr. Shepherd presented the summer school, um, enrollment, and presented some other options for summer enrichment programs, uh, that Dr. Wynn presented as well, the 21st Century, that's available for elementary, middle school, Starbase, of course, and then, of course, summer school, so there's like three main type of tie-in programs that I'm, I just wanna advocate that more parents, make sure they, um, have their children participate in, uh, to keep them engaged over the summer, and they're free, yeah, they're all free.
And I, I do wanna thank, uh, Communications Department for putting those things out, uh, they are, I, I saw, they're already advertising the summer program, uh, for alphabet and other.
Got alphabet, third.
Programs as well, so I'm gonna thank them for doing that, being time to do that as well.
Yep.
Right, do we have any other reports? Thank you all again for your time.